...that were paying taxes and then they weren't paying taxes because they're no longer um they are being assessed.
Okay, Pam's eyes, if she can answer your do you have any elaborate line?
No, it's just when you measure year to year, you get the anomalies of very tiny events like a property coming off the rolls whereas if you're measuring over a 10-year timeframe, you know, usually unless you have a cataclysmic event, you see values tend to track in general up. They might go like this, but they tend to track up. But measuring just year to year, you can get, you know, funny little anomalies like the one Craig's mentioning.
All right, well, that is true. Okay, I have an appraiser, so if you can measure this.
Sure, yes.
The, okay, so your presentation, you talk about this multi-filling land value revenue. So your hypothesis is based off of a four-story and top of a two-story parking?
Yes.
And that's what would be feasible for the highest and best use? How did you come to that number or how did you come to this hypothesis?
Uh, we asked an engineer to lay out the most efficient market-based stickover podium plant at the good, given the land, size of the land parcel. So it wasn't something that I did or that the appraiser did. It was based on an engineer's, you know, laying out a plan.
And I know Pam's going to talks a lot about commercial versus residential. Um, and I know that we are going to be putting 3,000 square feet of retail on the ground floor.
Yes.
I had a very helpful and productive conversation with the council office in talking about how building our commercial base isn't just about, you know, the 3,000 square feet you have in a residential building. You're not talking, you know, the 15,000 we might see over a normal one. We're talking about actual commercial properties for the entire main is commercial and not residential. And that's how we can build our commercial base.
Yes.
That being said, that's not feasible in anything in the Hancock lot where we aren't looking at any residential but are building upwards of just commercial space because seeing a property like that go up, I think would better help build that commercial base than not saying, well, give me, you know, 10,000 square feet on the first floor versus 3,000. That's not going to do anything for us as taxpayers, you know, but actually building, you know, on a 13,000 lot, 13,000 square foot lot and going upwards of, you know, four five stories and having a strictly different commercial, I think we had something that we both were based. So that means why can't we do anything here?
Well, the, and I think it goes to the question that was asked here about commercial in general, you know, are, why, why are we seeing only residential? Why aren't we pressing forward toward commercial? And there's a fundamental difference between the development approach for residential building and commercial building. In the residential building, you can build that building speculative. You don't have to have 48 of your friends, you know, identified in advance ready to take occupancy on day one. You can go to the bank, they'll loan you money, you can build the building and then you start to market and get occupants. With a commercial building, you have to know who the occupant is before you can get the money to build the building.
Right, but you can have conversations with folks while you're developing and say, you know, we're building up this building here and this is how many square foot it should be.
It's extremely difficult to get a lender to go forward on a speculative basis with commercial, with the commercial building. Even if you go to downtown Boston, the financial district or the Seaport, construction of new buildings for commercial, you know, primarily commercial occupancy doesn't occur until you have an identified tenant in hand who is willing not just to come, but to pay the rent that is needed to justify the cost of construction. Uh, you know, the land at Gillette, uh, at Procter and Yamb would not have been built upon if GE didn't show up and say, yep, we're ready to come, we're going to occupy the whole thing and we're prepared to pay a price and occupy at an occupancy cost that justifies that construction. Price Waterhouse Coopers, same thing in the Seaport. That building that Skanska built would not have been built if PWC didn't step forward holding hands with the developer in the lender's office saying, yes, we're going to occupy and PS, we're going to pay $72 a foot for the right to occupy.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with your logic. I'm just wondering if we can consider or at least keep in mind that we want to try to push for these kinds of conversations, right? Where we have, you know, not just a monopop shot that we're talking to to come in, you talk, you're giving big names to big companies here, but are we not going out and saying to these larger companies, hey, you know, in Quincy, we have this, just this lot here that has great use behind it, it's in a great location, it's by the train. Are we not pushing for those kinds of conversations because yes, you know, Gillette and those other companies?
I think Bill can describe that those conversations are ongoing, which is why you have a prospect at the Ross Garage.
That is correct. We have been doing that, we will continue to do that. We've done it for the last year since I've been working at this, I've been doing it with major corporations in the league that Pam just mentioned, not obviously not those. The fact of the matter is, our discussions with Foxborough would not be proceeding quite candidly unless the paradigm that Pam recited was at play. They have a tenant. And we started with Mr. Fatsis, started with those discussions, you know, with Mr. Stevens, a number, quite a number of months ago. And they said that they were going to pursue a prospective tenant, prospective anchor tenant, and if they were able to land that anchor tenant, they would be back to us. And indeed, they came back to us. And that's the underpinning for that particular project. And we have pursued major banks, for example, where they need to have processing centers where some of these areas in downtown Quincy would be suitable for. And once again, we have not finalized the determination as to what type of usage we believe will be best suitable for these other parcels that we, that we've mentioned here. I do not agree. We do want to look at a broad range. And if there was potential for a commercial development of the nature that you're describing, we certainly would be very interested in this.
Okay, I just wanted to know the conversation that happened. I think I was considering. The last question I have for you, Mr. Gary, is that when our legal counsel came here tonight, he expressed his concern for bringing in your issues and you had also said that you're going to work away from to amend the language to address those issues.
Yes.
When can you see that amended language in front of us?
You'll see it before the next meeting.
The next committee meeting or the next council meeting?
Same time.
Same time.
Looking at how, you know, we, none of the people that we need these times for that information.
We're talking about doing this right away. We're now talking about a major golf here, either in terms of the legal issues or the business issues. These are clarifications, they're intended to resolve ambiguities, but there's no renegotiation here. It's simply to work with Mr. Che to ensure that the concerns that this counsel has expressed and that he mirrors through this representation of the counsel, that we make it, we remove those ambiguities and we make it clear what it is that we're trying to achieve here and what the council's role will be in achieving this.
Okay, so we'll get them in a sufficient amount of time to look at before the committee.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Pam?
I'll take you back. Chairwoman, if I could, Pam, one of my things. This is, there's things that have happened over my lifespan here at times that really you need to think that I'm working way beyond my A level, so to speak, into the level of complexity. And clearly, this is one of those times where that's because the complexity that we're trying to do here is, it can be great. And I thought it could be helpful, I want to just recap a few things and make sure that I'm following, as you put it earlier, kind of where we are in the story, so to speak. And you first came on board, remember the first time you met me after the Streetworks experiment more or less was over and people were reimagining the concept about the way of furthering the downtown redevelopment. And if I'm misrepresenting this wrong, well, you know, but I wanted to make it clear. So you said that what we really need to do was first and foremost focus on those public parcels at that point in time and talk about how do we develop those specific parcels in a way that invites or acts as a catalyst for, in other words, to move even those in the private area to buy into the whole concept of reaching some type of consistency with a city's plan or view or vision of itself as opposed to relying on a traditional sort of approach. It's fairly accurate.
Yes.
So here we are at this pick-up point and we're at, we're talking about the Hancock, specifically the Hancock lot. And what's been thought, and again, I think obviously discussed a great deal, is that the whole concept is that there needs almost in a sense for the Hancock lot itself to be an orange stone type of project. It's kind of the name curl, whatever words they, that would help shape or act as a catalyst for the development of the additional space with the Hancock lot or activities. And what we're really talking about is a, the reality, and I think the council, Pam was saying earlier, is that market forces by themselves make it eventually totally infeasible for any redevelopment to come in and construct this kind of 15-story steel that was around 24 units that we're really talking about. I think the appraisal, the appraisal itself is really keeping some confusions. I've got a couple of references here tonight to feature myself.
Yes.
The appraisal project is what we're doing. We're not doing this specific building. And the idea is that in order to do that or to achieve that, we have to be incentivized in some way, whether that redevelopment is, in a way that kind of minimizes their risk as they move forward and ensures that somehow there's going to be some level of reasonable return on whatever investment they're making in order to make this happen.
Yes.
Correct assessment.
True.
I'm on it so far with this whole thing. And I think one of the corrupt things is generally here is I think there isn't any person up here who doesn't accept that in that fundamental concept. That's what we should be doing. I think generally, most people are very supportive of that. But as we move forward, and again, I know I'm very supportive of the concept because I think that's what's going to drive further the additional development of the system. But in the terms of the realpolitik of this, we're all elected and I'm like, there, we run next fall, not, you know, three falls from now. And there's a concern, and again, I think it's something the council, our public chair alluded to, is this, the, uh, the concept that we have a fiduciary responsibility to assess and so the people who are like us, the taxpayers of that. And there's a sense that what we have this responsibility is to somehow have enough information as we move forward in such a, such a way that ensures that they are getting some return on this very public investment that we're making.
Yes.
All right. So it leads us now to this point, and I want to say with all honesty, I thought I got it in terms of this appraisal, but now I'm not all together, so I do it in terms of being able to make such a case to the taxpayers. What we have is, is that we've decided to reach some kind of value for the land, basically, which I believe is part of, which is supposedly essentially the acquisition price.
Yes.
That would be part of the redevelopment's pro forma moving forward. It's not that we get into this thing. And as I was reading through the appraisal itself, this is where this question started to kind of gnaw a little bit, is that the approach towards value that they were taking was, again, this idea, this concept of sales comparison for a hypothetical project that if we were living in a hypothetical situation, which was just a private transaction, it'd be the core value or basis people would make in terms of financing or investing in this particular project. And, but the reality is, that's not what we're proposing, right? Because it's a transaction.
Yes.
That creates, in a sense, different kinds of understandings perhaps in terms of what the ultimate value of that property is. And it was interesting because one of the things that they wrote, and that you, that they wrote in that appraisal, and that's why I'm finally getting to the question for this, was that they made the statement that the cost approach and the income approach are not relevant. However, there's no explanation anywhere within that appraisal that gives why such would be irrelevant. And again, I find that, I do know that oftentimes when people are assessing property for development, they tend to do, do they not a mix of these various value approaches and try to reconcile them together in some way to come to the full fair value of the trajectory involved?
So it's an excellent question. And here's an attempt at it. In order for an approach, any approach, to be applicable, you have to believe that application of that approach is going to yield a credible and true answer. And the appraiser has set aside a cost approach for this reason. If we value land as the residual that can be, that a developer can afford to pay, given their cost of development, then, and going back to what this particular developer is proposing to build, we know that the cost is going to exceed the, the project's ability to pay for that cost. I mean, it's the residual value of the land on a cost approach basis for the O'Connell project as proposed is negative. It's a, you know, if we, you know, if we don't account for things like benefit of having a parking lot be constructed off-site, et cetera. There are various things, I suppose, that one could do to try to reconcile the math for that approach. But ordinarily, the only method that is workable for land valuation is either a residual based on the value on completion, why it's the cost of construction, or it's a sales comparison approach based on whoever's that paid. Those are the two recognized approaches. And when we know we have a project that is not feasible, the residual approach just doesn't work. It's not applicable, it's not going to give you a value that, you know, we would, that anyone would think is a reasonable market value of a property. Because there are so many idiosyncrasies associated with trying to advance a project that needs supports. I mean, I suppose you could make adjustments to try to capitalize the value of the supports that are being offered, being, you know.
Well, I think, I think that's, that's where you were getting to with this thing. Because, by the way, for example, and again, I'm way above my A scale already because it relates to these things, but it just strikes me that we heard it said a number of times, it just doesn't pencil. It just doesn't pencil. So if I go out and I'm talking to a constituent and they say, hey, you know, why, why do you need this decision? Why did you make, come up with this particular acquisition price or how did that, that go? And I'd say, well, because otherwise it just didn't pencil. If they ask me, well, how do you know that it just didn't pencil? And what evidence was ever presented before you who made a part of this record indicated that it clearly doesn't pencil? I would have to say, I haven't seen that because that hasn't been presented before. I, I believe it to be true without question. It's just going up in the residential and commercial. Well, they have to know that it's true. But again, we are talking about the optics of this body and the fact that we're doing our due diligence. Now, if we were involved, I'll tell you another example in terms of numbers, the rates of grilling for this appraisal, that they laid out a number of, of, what's the word that they were looking for, certain things that impact or affect the cost based on the highest and best use. And one of the things that they were talking about is something to the inclusionary zoning ordinance, et cetera. Well, the reality is, within the zone, being within, within the urban redevelopment zone, so to speak, it doesn't have to meet the regional zone. So the question that I would have to ask is even based on this hypothetical construct that we've made, given the fact that this is basing kind of a discount at that point based on the fact that they have to need that, there's no number associated with that. Anywhere that I can find, it'd get crazy. You see what I'm saying? So we look at what's that?
The adjustments.
What's the difference? What would be the adjustment to the cost that do the fact that in our zoning ordinance, we have exempted this particular area from that inclusionary zoning ordinance? So, you know, what's the difference? What's the cost? It's right, nothing, nothing that reflects it.
I know that the appraiser has made some underlying computations to try to calibrate the percentage adjustments that you see in the grids for these backers. And having gone through some of that with him, I can tell you that he's tried to use the, the specific math that's described in the ordinance, for example, 1% hard cost for the art, for the art, public art contribution, 50% of the hard costs associated with 10% of the units for the affordable housing buyout. And so I, I know that the specifics of the ordinance in terms of how it reads in the, the suggested math is something that was in his thinking when he developed the percentage adjustments.
Yeah, I just, again, I know everybody has all different levels of information trying to understand something, but a big part of this, obviously, is so I can support a whole article and in some regards, I guess it just leads really kind of to a question. I'm assuming, right, that the city is negotiating with this particular redevelopment, that there must be somewhere, someplace, a pro forma that exists that talks about why certain incentives are so critical to develop that. Why wouldn't this body be able to have an opportunity to view that, so to speak, so that it can see the impact that these particular concessions or particular things that we're making that would reinforce the value of the project that's being proposed?
Well, we.
Because, you know, being asked to embrace much of this.
Yes, I understand, I understand. I can tell you that I did pro forma studies early on in order to get comfortable with the idea that absence of supports, this project was underwired, you know, because the returns were more than subpar, I mean, by, by a multiple subpar. And if at some point you want to go back to those original studies, just even as a snapshot, to try and give a flavor of why ransom Quincy downtown can't support the cost of high-rise construction, I mean, we can certainly look at the.
Well, I was thinking more about, you know, if I said, when I show up appropriately, about the Affordable Housing Trust, and anybody who ever comes before who's looking to decide what they're inferring for a payment for the, of onsite units, it doesn't, or even if they're proposing onsite units, at a minimum, every, usually every one of those projects presents a basic pro forma that shows their, their source and, you know, the, and again, I, that, I understand that until what goes out and gets financed and does that, that it's not final, but at least some projection, some estimate in terms of what, what that looks like. And I'm just kind of, well, you've already heard the confusion here numerous times tonight. You think we're talking about building that stickover podium and not talking about this 15-story building? And I, that's just my, my concern. And the other thing is, is that, you know, one of the approaches that they referenced is the so-called income approach. Can you talk a little bit about what that income approach?
Well, you know, an income approach doesn't really apply to evaluation of land because land in and of itself isn't generating income. Now, there are ways to, to use the income as a basis for what the project might be worth when it's complete, then you subtract out the cost that's required to build it as a residual, the delta of the deal gives you some proxy for the land value that, you know, somebody can afford to pay for a project. But, but of course, unless you have land rent comps, you know, there isn't really an income appro, you know, a directly applicable income approach for the valuation.
Well, one would, again, even on the hypothetical level, from a planning perspective, one could basically look at the, you know, essentially what they're projecting out as the net income operating income they're receiving. But again, it's, however, they have to capitalize that, just so that it gives a sense here of what it is we are buying into and they, because again, it's hypothetical, theoretically, it's not impossible to say, let's, let's waive, you know, the acquisition cost, given that if the numbers are specific, waive it or, but that we can show on the other end, how that reflects back on.
Yeah, that's, as I said, if we want to, you want to roll, roll this back and I can share with you the, the little cost and revenue performance that were done at the outset to demonstrate.
Well, I'm thinking more about at some point, let's assume for a moment that we can move beyond the LPA and we're moving forward and to talk about these other steps, which by the way, it seems to me, whether we're talking about the savings, whether we're talking about this garage and the parts of the building, the name, but the agreement that needs to be reached by any one of these things or identifying the bond. By the time we come to vote as it relates to these bonds, will there be some level of pro forma before us that shows essentially true cost to the redevelopment, et cetera? And all of these, because like, again, I don't think there's going to be anything necessarily to hide. It's going to make a very positive.
Yeah, it's not going to be moving, but if, but if it's supportive on the decision, it provides you information, not just a decision.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it's a great, I can't think of a title, how we make the decisions. And essentially, that people, a great example is you take the issue of global warming, you have people who are split on one side that say it's, it's kind of myth, it's been created in science, it's a dead sound. On the other side, you have the other group that argues, oh, it's really sound science and you believe in science, you believe in this and everything. And yet, what's interesting is when you begin to question, you do people like Shrek and Cam, as they talk about these things, and you ask them, what have you read the literature? What do you understand? Absolutely nothing. The communism basic decisions that they form basically improve very.
And according to that.
And all I'm asking is, is that in terms of our due diligence, I feel a little uneasy moving forward without having said, not the hypotheticals just generally that prove the point, but rather this specific project, here's what it looks like. Because again, and to the extent that we would need to alter that agreement or deal to achieve and can show on the backend the return on investment to the city and for overall objective of downtown Collin, it just seems to me that that would be a lot more useful than the kind of exercise of going through this particular appraisal.
Yeah, I mean, the, the value of the land is, you know, is not, in fact, that's not so hard to understand, but I think under, getting to a comfort level with a why, a part of it, it's complicated.
I'm going to be clear, I support this very much and I'm prepared to vote for it. And yeah, I'm also very conscious of, yeah, the realpolitik related to this in terms of what's in the perception and imagination of people. I have, there's no, I do not believe this to be, but this is what can be said, that it's kind of a white elephant type sale or whatever, or that we are under dis, or we're. we're discounting this in some particular way. I don't believe that we are.
I don't think that you are at all. In fact, as I said at the outset, I don't think the value that's been put forward by the appraisal really is true for what you would expect to achieve in a transaction.
Yeah, but again, the appraisal itself lines it up that this is in this pure realm of where all things given, there are no incentives, there's no added external kinds of things to kind of get to this so-called true value. But the truth is, is for whoever the redeveloper is, is they're going to add true value to this over time, correct, in terms of what.
So the, the city expects to make, you know, back, or it doesn't, and that's.
Again, that, what I'm saying is, is that in relation to the actual acquisition and ongoing development of that, is there's something that just strengthens that even moving forward, yes?
Yeah, I mean, I.
In terms, in terms of these numbers, for example, what, this, this appraisal we have, we already have a price that says affordable housing, but this is exempt from affordable housing. What, what difference does that make in terms of the overall price?
Well, I guess, I would ask the question, if someone came forward with a feasible market rate deal, would you waive the affordable housing requirement?
I think, well, with this particular redeveloper, when it comes to affordable housing, to be honest with you, I'd waive just about any of it.
I'm not talking about this.
No, but I, I think it's important that be noted, because that's an issue that's been put out there, and I think it's very important to know what this particular developer has done to re-expire reuse projects around the city of Quincy. They're an incredibly important part of our overall housing inventory that we have. But I think the point is, is that whatever it would ta, take, take to achieve what our objective is, is to create this keystone project, to create this, be willing to do. But I want to be able to do it in a way that shows clearly that this is a bargain for us, as well as a good opportunity in terms of the redevelopment, which I believe generally it is. But in terms of the due diligence that needs to be done here, at some point, I'm sure, I'm hoping that we will see an actual pro forma.
Well, yeah, so I, again, I, I think, you know, showing a pro forma even now, you know, I don't know that it's necessary to wait.
Oh, I'd be happy to see that, so I know.
Just to sort of roll the block back to the original studies that were done to validate the need. You know, I think, I, I could present something for you to look at to, to prove the point without, without, I mean, that's already done. You know, I.
To be showing essentially that the acquisition price that's a result of this appraisal really is a fair and reasonable component of it.
Well, what I would be showing is that the project is not feasible for, without the totality of the supports that are in part implied in the agreement.
Right.
And as, as, as we talked about the other day, when I was here last, the combination of the parking fee and the building permanent amortization, and then the excess above that, the revenue, the, the revenue is insufficient without those, without the business terms of that agreement to support, you know, feasible cost. Now, as it relates to the appraisal, you know, there's, there is not so much of a, a, what's the word I'm searching for? A linkage necessarily between that pro forma and the price, because the price is predicated on what someone would build in the market, a feasible budget, or what someone would build, you know, if they were, if they were trying to construct something by it, not 15 stories tall with high-rise costs. So I guess my point is that you're asking sort of two different questions, that the pro forma helps to prove that the business deal that's been closing the LDA is necessary in order to deliver a return that will allow the project to be financed, and that in the end, the city stands to gain, you know, big revenue on, from those business terms that more than pay equivalent down for what you would have otherwise gotten if you just went to market for a hypothetical stickover podium, you know, with the added benefits of subsidizing or underwriting the cost of a parking garage, and et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, that's one set of conclusions that you get from a pro forma study. On the appraisal front, I think that you look to, again, to what the market would have built, would otherwise have built, without your proactively trying to support the development activity as a basis for value. And I think if you look at what other people have paid, again, your sites are very proximate, set aside how the public appraiser missed the adjustments, you know, for this matter or the other thing, the range is very tight, even before adjustments. You know, 30,000 to 40, 50, you know, for a car project, 50,000 a unit, and the appraiser's conclusion is at 37. So it's not like there's some, you know, kind of wild out of the box estimate you made by the appraiser on value. It's right in there, in terms of what other stickover podium developers.
No, I get that for stickover podium, but that's, you know, at the end of the day, that's not what we're doing. And I think that, that the extent that a pro forma that focuses in on the real cost and the real financing necessary.
What, what we could, what we could do.
I mean, it also would substantiate what would be really good, if basically brackets that, the, the fact that comparable sales approach was a really good way of.
Tighten up, so.
Better.
Yeah, exactly. So what we could do, and let me just suggest this, I mean, I could show you the whole pro forma that we did at the outset, again, that compares the value on completion to the cost for high-rise construction, and I could plug the appraised value into the land acquisition cost line, and you can see what that would do to the return.
I think that, I think that would be helpful.
We could, we could, we could help to understand whether or not they need or not.
This specific project, if it's come forward, this specific redeveloper at this time, really is kind of consistent with that your, your company, so to speak, is kind of the primary person laying out what the game plan was going to be, so to speak, that what's happening with this is developed, it's kind of consistent with everything that you've been doing forward from the beginning.
Yes, that's what it's true.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's only, you know, one thing that can never keep me out of trouble, and that's to tell the truth, never know. So, you know, it's not, it's not.
Although, no, that would just say it's more of a success, and this is more of a plan, but the one thing that jumped out at me at the appraisal generally as well, which is something, again, I don't think it's feasible necessarily for a redeveloper alone to deal with this particular issue, but one which I think is critical to talk about is the whole concept of offsite traffic mitigation. Because we have a thing that basically said, well, based on everything we're doing, again, this stickover podium of 48-some units or whatever, doesn't really talk about the impact of 128 units. And so the offsite traffic mitigation issue for that particular project may have more serious concerns or issues than what the appraisal is actually supporting there.
Yes, there's, there's no connection between, between the impact on what's actually been built and what underpinning the price of this cost.
Well, this, the extent that you can get that information, you can talk that, thank you very much, that, that chairman, that chairman's been very much, and thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Council of Finn. I think you made a great point about affordable housing. So on the affordable housing trust with Council of Finn, and second to the Quincy Housing Authority, I believe, Mr. O'Malley, who's been operating the second highest volume of public investment in this city of Prince. And we talked about, could we be willing to waive the affordable housing requirement? But I'm talking about someone who has a long history in developing and managing affordable housing in this city.
And I'd also make one point, there's no need to waive, because our zone will be already eradicated. I wish we could waive, to be honest with you, I suppose, to have.
You're a good lead into my next remarks, Council of Finn. So our downtown has been stagnant for 30 years. In 2010, it was an initiative by the COVID administration, shipped in by City Clerk Joe Shea, that this body could codify our zoning regulations for the first time since the 1960s. It is the policies, like these zoning ordinances, and like the URP, like the LDAs, when we talked about moving affordable housing, including public art, creates this framework that either discourages or encourages development. While the Streetworks LDA wasn't executed, it did stimulate substantial growth in our downtown. We talked tonight about four projects in our downtown, either under construction, permanent and underway. We have many in the periphery of downtown. Just to more of one, you look central, 10 Mary Hall, 99 Handoff, Bridge Street, that these were stimulated because of the development and the opportunity was happened, and what was happening in downtown. I agree with Council of Debona, that we need more commercial growth in our downtown area, but the market right now is calling for residential growth, and it's this residential growth that will bring the consumers to our downtown and will downline stimulate that commercial growth. This LDA is an opportunity to use a public asset to catalyze growth in our downtown. It is, we have noticed the temporary park space developed here in front of City Hall. The residents have started to really visualize what the impact that these public improvements make to the quality of life in the city of Quincy. For this matter, it's been a long committee meeting this evening, it's the third committee meeting we've had on the LDA. We are going to continue this meeting until January 23rd. There will be homework done offline. I know our city council, our council for the city council, Mr. Joe Shea, has three points loaded about clarifying language, what else will come for the city council for our votes, understanding this is a preliminary document to have many more votes coming, coming in line for this, for this project. With the garage, there'll be an authorization. With the use restrictions, we talked about, how do we ensure that commercial gets included? As part of the use restriction language is being changed, as well as what the remedies, the further obligations we secure by name, what is it that's going to protect us in this document, like we protected the taxpayers with the Streetworks document? So I thank you all for your time this evening. With that, we'll adjourn, we'll commence the meeting.